I'd like to call the liquor license hearing of July 18th to work and the applicant is the best in the west barbecue LLQ doing business as the best in the west barbecue. Address 2509 West Gulf Road. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod?
Present.
Commissioner Newell?
Present.
Commissioner Gata?
Present.
Everybody's here. Move on to, does anybody have any questions for the petitioner? Anybody from the commission or the village board?
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Gata?
Is the petitioner here?
Yes, he's right here. Come on up to the microphone and just introduce yourself for the record.
If you pull the mask down, we can understand you better, too. Go ahead. Say your name and address for the record.
No, no, no. My website designer, she didn't put no pricing in there yet because I didn't give her no prices. That was just...
It's a placeholder?
Yeah, it was a placeholder, exactly.
Well, yeah, because there are prices on here for the beverage and for pizza and so forth. So I just didn't know if you were selling it by the ounce.
Oh, no, no.
No? So I was gonna come over there and get 10 ounces.
Oh, okay. Sign me, though.
Me, too.
I don't have any other questions. Everybody looks fine.
Trustee Mills?
Yeah, what is, what location is this taking the place of?
That was a karate school.
It was the what?
It was an old karate school.
Okay, and this is over by the Mariano's parking lot? I mean, Mariano's?
The Plaza.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, I had the same one.
Okay. Does any of the public have any questions they'd like to ask? If not, the chair, oh, trustee Palafas.
When do you think you'll be open?
Well, I'm getting bids right now. So they start and build out, I think, August the first.
Okay, great.
So hopefully, two and a half months from August the first, so hopefully between October and November.
Right.
Excellent.
Circle the date.
Anything else, trustee Palafas?
Oh, no, I'm excited for your menu and stellar briskets. I'll be there.
Okay, there's no other questions. The chair has accepted a motion to release a license to the petitioner?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to release a license. Any discussion? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Newell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gata?
Aye.
Okay. Chair, accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Order of Public Health and Safety Committee meeting on July 18th, 2021, here in Village Hall. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Gata?
Present.
Vice Chairman Palafas?
Present.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Thank you, and we have a quorum. I need a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are recessed.
Okay, we're gonna start the board meeting and deal with two items. One is swearing in of Sergeant Merrick, and the other is a District 15 presentation. You ready to go, Beth? I'd like to call the order, the meeting of July 18th. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Trustee Palafas?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Mayor McLeod?
Present. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Arnett, will you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you have some business conduct, Chief Colley?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and Board, you get two for one tonight. So I'm proud to present Officer Adam Merrick to be promoted to Sergeant along with Dozer.
Okay.
Do you want to come up with your family?
What's the pings? He's very excited.
It's always great to promote somebody from within, and Sergeant Merrick has earned it, and so has Dozer. No doubt about it. So it's a great, it's a great night for the Village of Hoffman Estates. It's good to see so many folks in the audience. You bring your family up, you got everybody?
I got my, yeah, my immediate family's here, yes. I have more, I have extended family in the audience.
Come up, too.
All right, come on up.
I'm a dad.
My name is Drus, everybody.
Sure. This is my father, Glenn Merrick, my mother Nancy Merrick.
Hi.
My wife Jessie, and my three children, Tyler, Summer, and Illog. My father-in-law is Paul Masek, my mother-in-law Connie Masek, and aunts and uncles, and Dozer.
And Dozer, well.
Dozer's a little excited.
Dozer's getting promoted, too, so.
Very nice.
Okay. I am Merrick.
I am Merrick.
Haven't been appointed to the office of?
Haven't been appointed to the office of?
Police Sergeant?
Police Sergeant.
In the Village of Hoffman Estates?
In the Village of Hoffman Estates.
In the County of Cook and Cayne?
In the Counties of Cook and Cayne.
Do solemn swear at firm?
Do a solemn swear at Anaffirm.
They'll support the Constitution?
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois?
The State of Illinois.
They'll faithfully discharge the duties?
They'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office Sergeant?
Of the Office Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
You want to sign this for me? Sign right here. Right there, that's good.
Two stand.
Now, we have a very nice, couple of very nice badges. We'll do, Sergeant Merrick first, in the honors.
We're gonna get skewered.
I got one.
Gotta be smarter than the badge.
Sergeant Merrick, and now we also have a badge for Dozer. Who's gonna do that?
I'll do that.
Okay. That's Sergeant Merrick and Sergeant Dozer.
I'm very happy.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you go up and shake hands with everybody, the family, too?
Yep.
Come on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job, huh? Congratulations. Congratulations. Great. Come on, stay up here, get in picture.
Picture time.
Picture time.
Dozer.
Come on, stay up here, get in picture.
Picture time.
Picture time.
Dozer.
Okay, smile, Dozer.
Nobody's over five foot seven.
It's Dozer.
Okay, everybody, one, two, three. One. Three wants to come in for me. One, two, three. Very good, thank you.
Congratulations.
One, two, three. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Very good, thank you.
Congratulations.
We're doing the chief's.
Yeah.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. And give me one more, just to make sure I got eyes. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. And give me one more, just to make sure I got eyes. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Everybody wants to go next to the mic? Your grandpa's saying.
No, no, thank you.
You should even drink it.
Sure I could.
Okay, at this point, the superintendent, Heinz, you want to come up here with your team and make your presentation?
Dozer's a hard act to follow.
He is a hard act to follow.
But, well, thank you for having me. As the mayor said, I'm Lori Heinz. I'm the superintendent in District 15. Thank you so much for making time for us on tonight's agenda to talk about our Moving 15 Forward proposal. With me tonight is my chief school business official, Diana McClavsky, and we will move through our presentation, which I believe was shared with you. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe I had emailed that out.
Okay.
So will it be on the screen, or can I just speak to it?
If you give me a second, I can do that if you want to pass.
Wonderful. And in the meantime, Diana will pass out a few handouts in which we will frame most of our conversation tonight around. I will try to be brief, but while Mr. Palm is taking care of the tech, we have been at work with putting this plan together for the three years in which I've been the superintendent. I'm starting my fourth year in the district. But this work really began prior to my arrival four years ago with the Boundary Task Force and the then Board of Education. One of my top tasks when hired four years ago was to take care of the facility situation and some of the things that have been plaguing the district for quite some time. So my team and I, through a pandemic, have continued to put this plan together, and we've spent the last four months talking to the community. We've taken this on the road at all of our schools, thank you. We've had community officials in which you joined us, as did the police department within all the municipalities that we support, which are all or seven. We have taken this, the show on the road long and wide, and we will talk to really and truly anybody that wants to learn about it, because we feel as though we have an exciting plan, and we want to make sure that our very large community is aware of what this plan is about. So we're calling it the Moving 15 Forward initial, uh, plan. Initially, it started out as a Boundary Task Force, as I said just a moment ago, but once the team dug it, we realized it was a lot more than just some boundary lines that needed to change to solve some of the problems. So tonight, we're going to talk about, give you a little bit of information about the district. I don't know if all or some of you have children or have had children in the district, but we're gonna tell you a little bit about our district. We'll talk about critical challenges that we've tried to address that we really see as opportunities to move the district forward. So much like your board, you're charged with improving everything about Hoffman Estates, our board, myself as the superintendent, are charged with really trying to improve District 15. We will make sure you understand the proposed solutions and what we believe are the anticipated benefits, and then Diana will talk about the anticipated, the financial information, anticipated costs, and then some of the timelines and next steps. So about the district, we are the second largest elementary district in the state. We service, all are part of seven municipalities, Hoffman Estates being one. Rolling Meadows, Inverness, and Palatine are the municipalities in which we service entirely. We have a portion of unincorporated Arlington Heights, unincorporated Schaumburg, and a part of South Barrington. Our boundaries are around 35 miles, so we cover a lot of territory. The size of our district certainly plays into what made putting this proposal together so challenging. We'll get into that in a bit. We are the 13th largest English language population in the state of Illinois. If you think about 852 districts, we are the 13th largest EL district in the state. So that, you know, also compounds the work that we're trying to do, because we are not just delivering a core education, we are delivering an education in which we are also trying to help children who speak upwards of 80 languages master English and learn all the skills and content that we need them to. Ninety-nine percent of our students are educated within our boundaries and within our schools, and that means that our special education students are not sent to a different township or a different system, a therapeutic day system. We educate our children very proudly in district. And we've already talked about the languages that we speak and support, but we believe this plan is 100%, and everything we do really in the district every day is to do right by our students and deliver a very high-quality education to them. So we have 15 elementary schools, we have four junior highs, and Hoffman Estates, you know, we do not have a junior high within your boundaries. This plan will change that. And we have one therapeutic day school. We have roughly 11,000 to date, 500 students, but our enrollment has flexed a little bit over time, but it's fairly steady, a little over 11,000 students pre-K through eighth grade. And we have roughly 2,000 employees, so we are a large employer. We cover five unions, and we have a number of employees that are not part of a union. So with unions, as you also know, come collective bargaining agreements, and we have been working with our unions on this plan. But just so you understand from a scalability perspective, everything we do, we're putting in the hands of at least 2,000 employees, and they're working and putting materials in hands of close to 12,000 students. So again, like Texas, we're big, and everything we do, you know, is about scalability. I won't go into the strategic plan at length. I could spend quite a bit of time talking about it, but we believe this plan really helps us deliver on the strategic plan that we put in place just a little over three years ago, with the first commitment being to students. We are going to really address the facilities in which they learn in, the commitment to our teachers, the facilities in which our staff and teachers do their work within. Facility, or commitment three really has to do with our facilities, and you will hear in just a few moments in what rough shape they're in, and then the financial stewardship, the financial component that will help us move this forward and hopefully to fruition. And then we're always focused on results. Are we delivering the very best education we can? Is everything we're doing paying dividends are our children achieving? So this plan really keeps the work of the strategic plan at the center of it. I will not take up time to show the video, but I would encourage, if you haven't already seen it, to take about four and a half minutes and listen to the video. It does provide a nice overview of what it is we're trying to accomplish, and it shows you also in action some of the things we're trying to address within the plan, because it takes you into many of our schools. So some of the critical challenges. We are the second largest elementary district, as I've shared, but we have 1.7 million square feet of property, of facilities in which to maintain. And you will hear throughout this presentation that we have gotten into a bad position prior to my arrival, I will say, I won't take credit for it, with deferred maintenance. So we have deferred maintenance on the 1.7 million square feet of interior spaces to clean, maintain, and upkeep. This plan, what we developed as a result of this work was a one-to-five and then a six-to-10-year master facility plan, so we don't ever find ourselves in this position again. Deferred maintenance is supposed to be a short-term strategy. It became the strategy for the district. This plan will really get us up to a base level of facilities in terms of overall health, utilization, modernization, and then we have a multi-year plan for the next 10 to just keep chipping away at improving our facilities and never getting to this point again. Beyond our physical plant, we have 80 acres of land in which we have to maintain, cut, plow, and just do basic upkeep on. And the average age of our 20 facilities is 54 years. While that's not young, that's not old, you know, we're getting up there as a district. Here before you, you see our 20 schools. Our youngest school is Central Road at a mere 27 years. Our oldest school is GMS at 76 years. If any of you were paying attention back in 2016, when there was a referendum in the district, one of the things that referendum proposed was to close GMS, and you can imagine the community around GMS did not like that. Through our work, we've determined we don't need to close that school. It's going to need some TLC, which it will get as part of this plan. So some of the ongoing facility challenges that we've identified through our work has to do with the lack of security cameras and overall monitoring within our schools. We don't have enough interior or exterior cameras around any of our facilities. Now more than ever, we know we need to address that. So this plan will bring around $3 million worth of security upgrades to all of our schools. We have aging roofing, plumbing, and HVAC, just like your homes. All of those systems have what we call in our industry, a useful life. Many of, if not most, of these facilities in terms of plumbing, HVAC, and roofing are beyond their useful life. So we have within that one-to-five, six-to-10-year plan, a cycle in which we're going to upgrade and replace. We have some accessibility issues. So we have students and staff that are wheelchair-bound, and they don't have a full range of accessibility within our facilities, and we know that we need to take care of that. This plan will allow us to do so. Our libraries and learning spaces are outdated. New monies have not really been put into them for more than 30 years. This plan will allow us over time to upgrade those spaces. We'll start with our learning centers, which are our libraries, and then we'll move into shared learning spaces and then classroom spaces. Based on enrollment and enrollment trends, some of our schools have inadequate cafeteria and multipurpose room space, which means they have to run up to four lunch periods, making some of our students starting lunch at 10:30 in the morning, which we all know is breakfast, and some of them are not having lunch until 1:30, which is an hour or so before they leave. So with additional cafeteria or multipurpose space, we could truly offer lunch during lunch hours, and it would have less of an overall impact on that master schedule that our principals put together. We have a lack of energy efficiency, lighting, worn flooring, ceilings, and masonry, parking lots, sidewalks, and asphalts that are just in a great deal of disarray. And you will see, if you drive in and around our schools each summer, we've been chipping away at some of those projects, but this plan will allow us to tackle these projects much more quickly. And because we've deferred for so long, the timing in which we can bring these improvements is really important to us. So back prior to 2016, it was identified that we have inequitable facility usage. So by that, we mean some of our schools are overcrowded and some of them are under-crowded. The, hopefully the screen you can see will show Hunting Ridge, this is an elementary school in Palatine, it's at 114% capacity. So kids are learning in every nook and cranny. Teachers and related service providers are utilizing spaces just to deliver any supports that they need to, while Winston Campus or TJ are at 76 or 77% capacity. So they're being underutilized. This plan, we set an 85% utilization target, and we've been able to balance enrollment and really making sure that we're running our schools efficiently. Do any of you recall hearing about Park Place? There was a proposal a few years back to handle and balance some of our enrollment by taking on a 21st school in a blighted strip mall in Palatine?
I said no.
Yeah, our district said no. The former superintendent thought it was a good idea. One of the first big decisions we made as a board superintendent team was that we did not need Park Place. It was inequitable to put some of our most impoverished students in a strip mall school, but beyond that, it wasn't large enough. That population in the northeast quadrant of Palatine generates 22% of our enrollment. That facility would have held around 600 to 700 students. So for a variety of reasons, we decided not to move forward with a 21st school. The one thing long-term that a 21st school would do, even if it was the perfect size and it was the perfect parcel of land, it's going to increase that imperperity cost to run a 21st building. So we determined we didn't need a 21st building, and we've really figured out how to use the schools that we have much more efficiently. So we have an inconsistent feeder pattern within the district, and what that means for noneducators is that kids don't always go to the elementary closest to their home and then stay together and matriculate with their friends to junior high and then onto a specific high school, and that's very atypical. This plan will allow us to address this feeder pattern. So what you see before you, that what we call the spaghetti diagram, no longer exists. So if you focus on the hot pink rectangle of Stewart R. Paddock, which is in Palatine, you can see, hopefully, that the kids from Paddock spend kindergarten through sixth grade together, and then at that tender adolescent age, when they're heading to junior high, they're split between three different junior highs and then to two different high schools. So that is something that I have never seen in my 30-some years of education in any other district in Illinois or otherwise. This plan will allow us to have a very seamless and well-aligned plan. So we have fixed long-term district and community value to make sure that our kids are assigned one junior, one elementary, one junior high, and then they go to one high school. So you heard me when I was talking about Park Place in the northeast quadrant of Palatine. Students in that quad don't have a neighborhood school, and if you know that area, it's very landlocked. So even if we had the $56 to $60 million it would cost to build a new school, and that is the going rate for a new school, there's nowhere to put that new school. So we have worked through this plan to devise a way in which all of our kids will have a neighborhood school or a near neighborhood school in which they can attend, and parents will know that when they move into any area, what those schools will be. We have spent a lot of time figuring out where we should put our special education program. If you recall, we educate 99% of our students in-house. In the past, programs have been placed wherever there are, there is room. So in some of those schools that are less crowded, making, again, the equitable access of special education, EL, English language services, or even gifted services, very inequitable. So some of our kids are on buses for 40 to 45 minutes to receive the program that they need, because the program was placed where there was room versus where it would logically make sense to have them distributed across our boundaries, those 35 miles. We have, and we've already begun to move some of those programs, so kids are not crossing towns if they don't have to to receive the support that they need. This plan addresses that. That inconsistent feeder pattern becomes a nice linear matriculation, and we've figured out and balanced enrollment. No longer will our schools be overcrowded or underutilized. So we have boiled down the work to three gears of improvement. Repair and restore our facilities, update those learning spaces, and improve school transitions. So gear one, we will address these overdue, long overdue repairs, maintenance, and site improvements will provide some level of upgrade to our schools. We're going to increase health, safety, and security, increase energy efficiency, accessibility. We believe that will then prevent costly emergency repairs, and it's always our goal to extend the useful life of all of our schools and all of the systems within them, because that's just a good use of your dollars. We have painstakingly gone through, school by school, because we believe this plan delivers on these three gears for all 20 of our schools, for all of the communities in which we proudly educate students, and this documented, so we call it the one-pager dot-matrix, it will show you by school and by gear what they're going to receive as a result of this plan. So for example, in your community, you have Frank C. Whitley, right? And you can see that Whitley has a lot of red dots, which means they have those proposed improvements within your boundaries. There is a facility video, and again, as much as I'd love to show it, I want to be respectful of your time, but again, this is about another four-minute investment. Watch this video, and you can see firsthand what is going on in our schools. So in terms of updating our learning spaces, beyond opening our libraries at the elementary level, they were closed a number of years ago 50% of the time as a cost-saving measure. And in an elementary school, our libraries need to be open five days a week, all day. We do have library standards in Illinois that we want to make sure to teach, and we want to update our libraries so they're modern and flexible. But beyond that, part of this plan will bring full-day kindergarten to the district, and it is something from an educational perspective that we desperately need. And by bringing full-day kindergarten, we also hope to convert our junior highs to middle schools. So our kindergarten teachers are wonderful. They're in a daily race against time right now. They have 155 minutes to educate five-year-olds. I mean, God bless them, I must tell you. It's not an easy job. But we can't get to all the curriculum, nor to the depth of the curriculum that we would like to. But with a full-day program, you can just see, we're going to double the amount of time we can educate kids, and we will increase our literacy time, our mathematics time, those are our top two content areas. But there are also content areas, and that's kind of that yellowish color, that we haven't, we don't have time to get to, that we will be able to provide. More time for science, time for science and social studies exploration. Kids will have more time for specials, which are PE, music, and art, and we'll just be able to provide a much more well-rounded educational experience that more closely mirrors what our first through eighth graders get by having additional time. We will move our sixth graders out of the elementary school to make room for a full-day kindergarten, and then we will convert our junior highs into middle schools. Our junior high schedule is based on a high school model, a 42 minutes per subject. The bell rings, and they move to another area. A middle school would allow for us to create what we're calling a house concept, schools within a school where our sixth graders, smaller groups of them will team together with a group of teachers. They will move within a sixth-grade area in the building. We will move our sixth graders out of the elementary school to make room for a full-day kindergarten. And then we will convert our junior highs into middle schools. Our junior high schedule is based on a high school model of 42 minutes per subject. The bell rings, they move to another area. A middle school would allow for us to create what we're calling a house concept. Schools within a school where our sixth graders, smaller groups of them will team together with a group of teachers. They will move within a sixth-grade area in the building. Seventh grade and eighth grade will have a similar house concept. And we will, we will be able to achieve that with a few of our larger junior highs by doing an addition to Plum Grove and by converting TJ into your very own middle school, Hoffman. Kids will not have to cross Hoffman Estates into Rolling Meadows to receive their junior high education. This slide really talks also about, beyond the physical plant, some of the things we're trying to accomplish that will move the district forward in terms of more modern resources in our teachers' hands. For example, the junior high teachers have a 20-year-old literacy resource. Lots changed in instruction, lots changed period in 20 years. Education is no different. So we're going to modernize curricular resources, learning spaces, library collections, so kids have access to new books that really reflect our changing demographic. And we're going to look for ways to integrate the use of technology into our newly revised curriculum. I will say, the only benefit COVID presented for us was we were able to put devices in all of our students' hands. We are now a one-to-one district. Prior to the pandemic, we were not. Now we're looking for ways to help teachers use technology and books across the curriculum. So here you can see again, the second part of the one-pager, gear two, how each school stands to benefit from the proposed updated learning spaces. And then lastly, we're going to improve that transition. So kids attend their neighborhood school or a new neighborhood school. So just like in the northeast quadrant, there is no school. As you know, there's no junior high here in Hoffman Estates. So there's the spaghetti diagram again. Look at how nice it looks when we fix the problem, when we balance enrollment by moving some boundary lines, by doing some interior renovations, some additions, and that beautiful transformation of Thomas Jefferson into its very own middle school. So you can see how the matriculation patterns. The elementary feeders will be Marion Jordan, which is a school in Palatine, and Frank C. Whitley. They would matriculate together to Thomas Jefferson Middle School and then on to Framed High School. And there you can see the breakdown of the third year, which has to do with how our students move through their school experience. So proposed configurations, I put your, your two elementaries feeding into your middle school in red. And then lastly, under review, I want to just make note of Winston Campus, the proposal there, it's our very large school on Palatine Road. It's for the longest time been a pre-K8 environment. This plan would allow, would more than likely bring our fifth graders also out of Jane Addams, Lake Louise, and Virginia Lake so they can attend Winston Campus Intermediate and Middle School. And that has to do with the number of children that are in that northeast quadrant that have been moved around to different schools to receive language supports going back into their home schools. That doesn't necessarily have anything to do with you, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that this is something that's under review because there are some parents in those three schools that are hoping we don't do this and we can figure out a way to keep our fifth graders there at Lake Louise, Virginia Lake, and Jane Addams. And that is under review. So here is our current elementary map. You can see where Frank C. Whitley is listed in brown and Marion Jordan is listed in hot pink. The next screen, you will see, if you look at the proposed, where you see TJ in light blue, that'll be where the Hoffman Estates Middle School will be located. Turn it over to Diana, we're almost done.
Okay, on this slide, we have four high-level indicators of the financial health of the district, which is really very positive. So the first one, every year, the Illinois State Board of Education, after the audit comes out, they rank every, they give you a ranking based on various financial, cash flow and borrowing costs and all that kind of thing. We get a 3.9 out of 4, really high, really good, really strong. We want to keep that. Next, prudent fund balances. Everybody, but every municipality, school district, you have to have some fund balance for those rainy day events like COVID. And D-15 has been able to maintain about a 35% reserve for the last several years. The ISB would like 25%, so we are exceeding their base. And again, our expenditure budget is about $200 million. So we range between like about $55 million to $60 million in fund balance. We rank very high Moody's, and we want to keep that at a AA2. And again, our outstanding debt is low. As you know, too, our levy is based on that EAV, and we're restricted to 6.9% of debt ceiling. And we're only at about 1%, so there is room to take on some additional debt. Okay, and then real quickly, every school district mostly in the state of Illinois is tax, property tax-dependent. And we're no different. About 73% of our revenues come from property taxes and just a little from state and a little from federal. And our expenditures, again, we're a service organization, so 71% of our expenditures are salary and benefits. We've got those 2,000 employees, about 1,000 teachers, and most of that additional 1,000 people are people who are actually working in the classroom, too. So when it comes down to what is the money? So the money is that $93 million, the district can come up with on our own. We can come up with a combination of what we're doing now is $5 million a year in what we call Fund 20, which is our own operation domains fund, so $5 million a year. So for the next five years, that's about $25 million. We want to take out some debt certificates, they're in the 35,000, 35 million range-ish. And then we also have some debt that's rolling off, and we'll reissue that debt. So the district, without going out to the taxpayers, we can fund 93 million. We need to ask that, we need, well, this will come to the board in August. The additional amount of money needed is another 93 million, a 50-50 split. In August, August 11th, we will have on the next slide, oh, let's keep going, I'm sorry, what?
Do this one, do the next one.
Yeah, okay, so what does it translate into a fair market value of a home? And you can see we've got five levels here with the most populated home at the $300,000 level. So 93 million annual investment. Now, when we put this together, this was a few months ago, and interest rates have popped up since then. But we want to keep our message consistent right now. $139 annual investment on a $300,000 home, or about $1150 on a monthly investment.
So as Diana said, and we'll talk about upcoming dates and the interest rates and that impact. But what you have before you, and we mailed this to every home within our boundaries, which is over 42,000 homes, should have received a letter from Lisa Schuppy, our board president, and myself. She apologizes, she's not here, but she's sweating in Houston right now at a work event. That's 111, a letter, and this one-pager, so it's anticipated benefits in our gears. And then you have information on TJ and Whitley, so you can see again how the schools within your boundaries would benefit. We've made these for all 20 of our schools. They're on every school's website, they're on our district website, and we're taking them around so people see the improvements that will be at the schools within where they live. Just to get you a little excited, I'm gonna, well, hopefully you'll be excited, I know I am, what this proposed conversion will look like to TJ. So for a TJ middle school, you will see, this is the house concept again, sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders having their own houses in which to learn from. And this will show you the first floor and some additions here that have been, have been etched in in green. So those are gymnasiums, cafeterias, lockers, and staging areas for food. Because we do not only run our own bus fleets, we also prepare all of our own meals. We have in-house prep kitchens. This is the second floor and how they're going to make one for seventh grade and one for eighth grade. The nice thing about how TJ is set up as an elementary school, if you, do any of you have kids go through TJ? No? You have little interior pods where classrooms are connected, and then there's learning spaces outside of the doors. And then we're going to be able to put resource, which are your special education, EL supports, lockers, and bathrooms right within each of the houses. Junior high kids tend to have to go to their locker a lot, and they might be gone five or six or so minutes. Now they just have to walk out the door, find their locker, and come right on back to class. So it really, as we dug into, could we convert TJ into a middle school? We found out that it's quite well-suited for us to do so. Here is an aerial rendition of the, a rendering rather. The dark, heavy, kind of low gray is the existing 1970s facility. To my right anyways, and how you're looking at it, with the white roofing and a lot of windows, that's the addition on to TJ. And then this is just an exterior front, and this will be, become the new main entrance. They'll still use the other entrance, but this will be the new main entrance, and it'll be very well-marked. And that's some of just quick interior renderings. They're going to have these learning spaces, modern classrooms, but then where kids can learn outside of the classrooms. And this just shows you what that might look like. So teachers and kids can collaborate in spaces both within the classroom and outside of the classroom. So this is all just again, a rendering. Information on Whitley and Marion Jordan, which will feed TJ Middle School. Again, Lisa couldn't come here, but what she typically talks to our community about is what drove her to become a board member was the failed referendum of 2016. And she became a member then of also the Boundary Task Force prior to running for the board. So this is a project that she's been involved in, you know, certainly prior to my arrival. She's quite passionate about it. She said you can reach out to her with any questions. You can find her email address on our website. So we believe this plan is comprehensive and overdue. It really does bring something to every school and every student, every staff member and community. Where we believe it will provide full-day kindergarten, it's going to repair and restore our 20 facilities, convert our junior highs, make sure programs are equitably distributed across our boundaries so students that need additional support to learn have access to it, will resolve our capacity issues, and just wholesale be able to move the district forward in a very positive way. So we have a website, you can visit it. Any presentation or information can be found there. We've just given you information on where we've been. We've taken this plan, as I said, far and wide. We have dates coming up that are listed, but we have big dates ahead of us. So board is still very much taking feedback. We have a meeting Thursday, August 11th. It is a big one for the board. Any modifications or changes to the plan that was originally presented to them prior to all of this public engagement? We're working on what that final deck will look like. It's a big decision day for the board. They're either going to say, you know, Dr. Heinz and Company, you've got it. We support this plan, go forward, or you're not there yet. So that's a big meeting for us. It's what I'm, I'll lose sleep over until August 11th. And then at that time, the board's going to say yes or no. Should they decide to move forward, and Diana said, we need $93 million worth of support from the community, that will go on to the November 8th ballot, and it will be a referendum question. That's the yes or no. They will direct me to put a ballot measure on or not. And then we have until the end of August to file with the Cook County Clerk's Department. Should the board direct me to do, to adopt a question? It would go again on the November 8th referendum. And should all of this happen, and the community says, yes, indeed, we support this plan because we think it's going to bring good things to District 15, all of this would go live for the '24, '25 school year. We do have, I said that one to five, six to 10-year master facility plan, but we also have a three-year construction plan that would phase this plan in over time. But we will know, I will know yes or no in August. And then if the answer is yes, I'll know if it's going to come to fruition November 8th. So thank you for your time, I'm here. If you want to ask any questions before we let you get back to the rest of your meeting?
Trusty Pluffus.
I have so many questions.
Okay.
So I'm District 15 Educated.
Wonderful.
Big fan of your plan here, but I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Are you as a district today carrying any debt?
Very little, Diana can speak to that.
Yeah, we do have, we have debt. I do not know the number off the top of my head, so I could always follow up with you. But yes, we do, we do, 1% of our EAV.
Are you planning to poll $93 million of debt service with bonds?
No, three ways, right. The 93, well, the 93, if it passes, yeah, those are, those, well, 25 million, well, yes, I'm, yeah, okay.
It's okay.
A little nervous here, but yes, all 93, it would be passed in a referendum, would be bonds. Yes, we will issue bonds hopefully very soon.
And one of the things that we will talk to the board about, and Diana, when we were talking about her slide in terms of fair market value and the impact to the taxpayer, we work with Raymond James and Chapman Cutler, but Raymond James forecasted these numbers. We're watching the market. And what we'll issue, we'll decide if, again, we go forward with everything, is how to issue them. Will we issue all 93 million at once? Will we issue them in one, two, or three tranches? And then that would increase, that would determine then the payback period. So would it be on the rolls for 20 years, for 21 or 22 years, depending on how we try to issue? So that will be a decision point, you know, for the Board of Education.
Couple others. So today TJ is K through six. Where all the K through fives going to go?
So they have, they will go to Whitley and Marion Jordan.
Okay, because I didn't see those as highly underutilized, so I was just curious where.
Moving our sixth graders out makes room for a full-day kindergarten, and they do have space. Neither one of those schools are very heavily populated. They also have special education programs. We've moved some of our special education classrooms already out of Marion Jordan because they were housing our SIP program, our Structured Independent Program for our students with autism. We've split that population now between Marion Jordan and Jane Adams. Thomas Jefferson did have the SEAL program, which is a social-emotional, you know, academic learning program, which will now go over to, one will stay at TJ and one will go over to Lincoln. So we're doing that through some programmatic moves.
Gotcha. Has your district done any like traffic studies about how the bus traffic will move and change? You know, like specifically for us at Down Freeman and Winston Drives and?
We absolutely have. We've met with a number of the villages when we've engaged in traffic studies, some informally, some very formally. The architects and construction managers are working with the villages. So we're going to move through zoning and everything that we need to move through to make sure that we're ready. We do run our own buses, so we have capabilities in terms of where we'll stage buses. Many of the additions, so for example, for TJ, they'll have two entryways. Same thing at Plum Grove, which is also a tight spot in the morning and in the afternoon. We're going to change parking lots, we're going to change how our buses move, and we're going to have multiple drop-off locations. So we're actually going to split bus and parent traffic. So we think we're going to be able to address also some longstanding issues with, with traffic patterns and, you know, densely populated drop-off areas.
Great, two more questions, and then I'll leave you with two comments. So do you still own the 40 acres off of Eila Road?
We sure do.
Any plans, are you gonna, I mean, it's kind of dead space in terms of any ways we can help you because we have to go through Inverness, which doesn't have water and sewer, and a lot of other things really, but.
That's, we, a few years ago when I started, we did have a few folks reach out to us, you know, wanting to purchase it at a very low dollar value, as you could imagine. So we declined those offers. We know that there are some shortcomings with the property. It is something that we've talked about. We would certainly entertain any, you know, reasonable offer, but it's not suitable really for a school. And just based on the fact that Eila right there is one lane each way, you know, it would be, would be very difficult to put a school there. But we, we did talk about it, and I don't know if you have anything to add?
We've talked with some real estate agents. We are aware of the water issues there. We are, we, when this all calms down, I do have an agent we've been working at and working with, and he's willing to kind of engage us in further conversations about potential, you know, should we sell? What should we, you know, options for that, for that property. But right now, at this moment, we're just holding tight.
We did use, I'm sure you heard, Amazon did, Amazon Movies put a, used that lane for Paper Girls, so.
Made a couple bucks off.
It's the best use of that land since the 60s, really.
It sure is.
The rumor at the time was that was the original site for Framed High School, but I don't know if that's true. Anyway, last time there was an attempt for a referendum, 2016, I think you talked about, there was a 10-year teacher contract attached to it. Very unpopular, by the way, is there?
I don't blame anybody that thinks, 10 years is a long time.
Is there anything tailored or added on to this referendum like that, or?
No. So the last referendum they asked to the community was 130 million. And when I was kind of nosing through some of the feedback as I was entering into the role, it wasn't a something-for-everyone plan. So we took that to heart in terms of our dedication to making sure every school, every community benefited. We decreased the ask, you know, impact on the community. Hopefully, you can see that we believe we've increased what would be the deliverables. We are six years into that 10-year contract, and no, we're not going to, we're not going to be extending that contract. It will be renegotiated when it's, when it's up.
I think that's a good idea. I think that's part of the reason they killed it. So two comments.
You know, and you think about it, who could imagine, like, what has happened in those, the last six years? We've had war in the Ukraine, we have, you know, we had a global pandemic. So it tends to be why you don't negotiate a 10-year agreement because you can't anticipate what could change. And look at the market now with inflation. So it won't be extended, it will be, it will be renegotiated. Every other union of the other four, they have two- to three-year contracts.
So two comments I'll leave you with, and take it for what it's worth. The first is, there wasn't a wild level of acceptance. The first is, there wasn't a wild level of acceptance of your predecessor. Think you did a lot of things wrong and that it's a godsend they hired you. Maybe not soon enough, but nevertheless, it's great what you're doing here and the changes you made. And being a lifelong District 15er, it was, it killed me to watch them circle the drain, go from number one to whatever number you are now, whether, you know, you can beat numbers and say what they want. Number two is if you look at referendums in the area that have failed, and there's one district that's wildly popular at how they fail, that crosses into our geo, I think 17, eight out of the 27 that they've tried to pass over the last 30 years have failed, or have succeeded, and the others have failed. Largely in part, our community supports the referendums because we see the value of the education. So if there's any way we could try to help your efforts, you know, we have a very reasonable and open-minded group of residents that live in that area that support. Your uphill battle is going to be Inverness and Palatine, so which I think you know.
We were with the Inverness Board last week and the feedback from the mayor and everyone else was very positive. So we have not been before Palatine yet, and I don't know that we'll get airtime, so.
Yeah, that would be a shame. But nevertheless, good luck. That's all I had.
Thank you. Very much, any other questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure. Again, thank you for your time. I know you've got a busy agenda. All right, take care and keep watching. August 11th is a big meeting.
We'll be watching.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The board received a motion to recess the village board meeting until the completion of the Public Works and Utility Commission.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second, may I discuss? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to reconvene the Public Health and Safety Committee, July 18th, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Gata.
Present.
Vice Chairman Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Number two, approval of the minutes of June 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Nothing under new business this evening and reports for information only the first one. Police Department Monthly Report, Chief?
Nothing to add.
Let's, let me read the letter now. We have two letters that I'm going to read. One is typed, which is easy to read. The other one, she even apologizes. Anyways, this is to Chief Kasha Crowley, and it says, subject, Commanding Officers Michelle and Allen. It says, my wife and I would like to acknowledge and thank the help of Hoffman Estates Police Officers Michelle and Allen. On Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, my mother-in-law Joan, who was 89 years old, left the house for a while. This particular day was one of the hottest days in recent memory. Apparently she had become disorientated and sat down on the grass, unable to get up without assistance. If, if not for the timely intervention of, of the before-mentioned officers, the potential for greater tragedy was avoided. They treated her with respect and helped her home. We will always be thankful for your help in seeing her safely home to us. Officers Michelle and Allen exhibit the kindness and professionalism that makes us proud of the women and men who serve our community in the Hoffman Estates Police Department. Thank you so much. Paul, Diana, that's it. And again, you know, that goes to show you our police department as compared to any of them around, right? We are the number one without a doubt in all of the work that you do from the chief and the deputy chiefs and the sergeants and everything else to keep them educated and keeping us safe on that. And we thank you for that. The second one, dear Chief Crowley, this note is to acknowledge and thank the Hoffman Estates Police Officers who responded to the vehicle accident at Western Street and Bodie Friday, June 24th. Their kindness and care for me kept me calm in a stressful situation. You can be proud of the professionalism and efficiency that I am most grateful. Sincerely yours, Mary Ann. It says, I apologize for my poor penmanship. My shoulder and feeling is still not quite right. And it's again, you know, this goes to show you who our police force is, right, in Hoffman Estates. The other one is from a neighboring village of Vernon Hills. And this is to Chief Crowley. On behalf of the Vernon Hills Police Department, I would like to extend my thanks to Hoffman Estates Police Department and Officer CJ Johnson for his NIPIS response provided to our department while preparing for a search warrant on Sunday, June 19th, 2022. Although the service of the warrant was delayed and eventually served without NIPIS assistance, the presence of the team helped to ensure public safety during a rapidly evolving situation. We are reminded of the commitment NIPIS members make by bringing availability to respond, to assist during federal holidays and even Father's Day. I appreciate your department and assistance flexibility in allowing personnel to assist our agency with this incident. As a partner agency, we are glad that this situation was resolved successfully and without incidents. It is comforting to know that we can count on each other, right, for assistance when needed. Let's see, which chief would like to poll us?
He's Mr. NIPIS.
Right. Well, because you know what? The viewing audience and so forth really and truly don't know what NIPIS is. So if you would not mind taking a few minutes just to explain what that is and what we do with NIPIS, just like here for Vernon Hills, how we go to assist.
Yes, thank you. So in that particular letter, what they're talking about is the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System Emergency Services Team. And that's one of the largest multi-jurisdictional SWAT teams in the nation. The NIPIS Emergency Services Team handles SWAT operations for over 70 different towns in five different counties, and Hoffman Estates is a member of that team. To be a member of that team, you have to join with an intergovernmental agreement, and then you have to donate one of your officers or at least one of your officers onto the team. And then that team is specifically trained, or that member is specifically trained for SWAT operations. That's what the emergency services team is. So this officer here, Clayton Johnson, is one of our newest members of the SWAT team. He's doing a fantastic job for us. And the NIPIS Emergency Services Team members all get together. It's really a cost savings and training value to every village and town and city that's involved in it, rather than every one of our little towns in those 70 different towns or 70 different communities, rather than every single police department having their own SWAT team, paying all of the money that that would incur to train and equip multiple members of your own agency in the SWAT team. By joining the NIPIS Emergency Services Team, you only have to train or equip one or two officers. And with that, you get all of the benefits of having a fully trained, fully outfitted SWAT team at a very small cost. So the towns continue to help each other throughout all kinds of events. The NIPIS Emergency Services Team handles anywhere from 25 to 35 to 50 callouts a year, depending on how busy it was over the last several years. We've been extraordinarily busy with the SWAT team. Even events such as Highland Park, just recently, the SWAT team responded and assisted in that. So it's a very worthwhile and beneficial operation for the villages to be a part of. And as you see just from that thank you letter from another town, certainly we asked for their assistance throughout the years, and we've offered our assistance by, by being part of that team and sending our members when other agencies call for help.
Any questions from the board? Trustee Arnett?
How many members do we have on the?
So we currently have two members, one on the police department and one on the fire department.
Any other questions? Okay, Chief, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, number two, Health and Human Services Monthly Department? Nothing to add, thank you. This will be received and filed. And number three, Emergency Management Coordinator Monthly Report? Sarah, are you on? Didn't even see you over there, right? Do you have anything to add? No? I was going to ask last time, I think, something about the damage assessment that you were putting together or so? We can't hear you unless you talk into a microphone. And if you, when you're up there, if you lower the mask, we'll just be able to understand you a little bit better.
So we had a pretty severe storm on June 13th or 12th, I believe, and we had the damage assessment team do an official preliminary assessment, and we found the majority of the damage was near Lakeview School and St. Hubert's Church over in that little quarter. We did submit that damage to the National Weather Service, and they found that it was not a tornado for us, but they actually did find that we did have a very small tornado in the Arthur General Forest Preserve. So it was an EF0, zero damage, and in the forest preserve. But the damage assessment team was effective and efficient at giving the information needed to the National Weather Service in time and manner.
Yeah, because you put that program together, is that correct?
We're starting it, yep. This is the first year.
Very good. Any questions from the board on anything like this? Okay, thank you very much, Sarah. We appreciate it. And this will be received and filed. The last one is the Fire Department Monthly Report, Chief? Thank you, received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Chairman Gata.
Okay, nothing and other items in review? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee tonight, July 18th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Palafas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Newell.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
And we have a quorum. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion and a second for the approval of minutes from June 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it, thank you. One item under new business, which is a request approval of an amendment to the License User Agreement with Ticketmaster LLC to provide enhanced ticket services at the Now Arena.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Dan, you want to add a little color commentary or?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Plafis.
Sure.
Right now, we have an existing contract with Ticketmaster to provide ticket services for the arena. What's before you tonight is an amendment to that contract to allow Ticketmaster to provide enhanced ticketing services through a new software program that will help out our box office in these additional features for selling tickets. And Ben is on the line. I'm going to let him go through what exactly those enhancements are. But before we get to that, again, this is an amendment, and the, the cost for the new software, there's a one-time $5,000 fee. There's a $12,500 licensing and hosting fee that would be an annual fee. And then there is a $10,000 fee for account manager services, which is an added feature to the existing ticketing services that we have. Again, Ben's going to walk through that. It's a budgeted item. We have it funded in this year's budget, it's covered. And before you consider it, I just want Ben to walk through what exactly those enhancements are. You're, Ben, you still there?
Okay, so as I was saying, as Dan said, it's a budgeted item. It's over my spending threshold, so we're bringing it forward to the board. Majority of our customers, even pre-pandemic, prefer digital tickets. They want to be able to afford them, they want to be able to send them to whoever they want to without having to mail them, drop them off, leave them at will call. Obviously, post-pandemic, everybody wants digital tickets. They don't want hard tickets anymore. So ArcTix really helps them manage tickets in any which way they want, give them an online account where all their tickets will live. We no longer afford them anything, we no longer mail them anything. And the benefit of the customer is they can forward it to as many people as they want. If they want to unforward it, they can do that. They can really control their tickets digitally. And, you know, it's Ticketmaster, so it's like the best experience they can possibly get anywhere. So we have 20 annual suite holders. So it is very important that we always give them a premier, first-class experience because every year we go to them and want them to renew. So obviously, we always want to bring them more amenities, better experience. And what we had heard from annual suite holders is mailing them tickets really was a burden on them. You know, they're having to spend a lot of time getting the tickets to people, sending them to will call. People would lose the tickets. So digitizing the experience was really what we wanted to do for years, and ArcTix allows us to do that. And also, it's just a first-class piece of software. Beyond that, we're also able to then track the tickets. So if somebody has forwarded their tickets to somebody else, we know who that person is, and if they come to the box office with an issue, it's not a stranger. It's somebody that we know received the tickets, and we can actually problem solve more efficiently during the show, which before, if they forwarded to a friend of a friend of a friend's cousin, we had no idea who that person was. So problem solving something usually didn't go well, and that would ultimately look bad for the suite holder. So the annual suite holders will have a vastly enhanced experience, which is important to us because they're annuals. In addition to that, our one-off suite rentals, which has grown exponentially, I would say in 2017, we had about $35,000 in one-off suite rentals. In 2019, we had nearly $200,000. This past week, we processed nearly $80,000 in one-off suite rentals. These folks also enjoy the same experience. So if they need to forward it, so you buy a ticket for the pay-per-view we put on sale last week, you, you receive all 10 tickets, you're able to then forward them to 10 different people if you want to, rather than them meeting you in the parking lot. So again, it's a lot of customer service, customer-facing enhancements that ArcTix provides to us. So it's important, it ensures that, A, renewals for annuals, but also ensures repeat customers for these one-off rentals, which just makes our life easier because we're not always having to replace customers because they buy once, they never come back. Now we have good feedback where they buy once, they, that was great, I want a suite for next year. So those are the customer-facing things. Another big item for us is the Windy City Bulls, and this is in the memo, they use a software package called Fevo. It is their group sales platform. Without ArcTix, Fevo does not work. So the Bulls have enjoyed, up until the pandemic, had seen their best year in terms of ticket sales. A lot of that had to do with using their Fevo software. Using ArcTix enables Fevo to integrate smoothly with Ticketmaster. So it's a benefit to the Bulls, it's a benefit to our suite holders, it's a benefit to our suite holder rentals. So across the board, we had budgeted for it because we wanted to see what this could do for us, and we're already testing it now. So it's a customer service plate that has revenue, revenue impact in terms of just customer retention, but then it has direct revenue generation for the Bulls because they need this for their Fevo to work. So those are all the elements that kind of help make ArcTix kind of a solution that we really do need. Now, the plan is to test it in 2022. If we like it, we'll continue to budget for it. But those are the attributes of, those are the attributes we like and the reasons we wanted to get a budget for in 2022. Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions, Ben.
Comments? All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motions, second, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, guys. Sorry about that. Bye.
Reports for information only. First up is finance department monthly report. Any questions or comments? Any additions, Rachel? Okay. Information technology department monthly report. Any questions, comments? Derek, anything? I used to seeing you back there in that suit, you look good. Number three, Now Arena monthly report. Any questions, comments? Why we got Ben on the phone? We hung up? We don't have Ben on the phone. Any questions or comments? All having done, that will be received and filed across the board. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting.
All right. Other, there is nothing. Another items in review, we have none. And I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye, and five of us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, I would like to call the Public Works and Utility Committee to order on this July 18, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Noel.
Present.
Vice chairperson Gata.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we're all accounted for and have a quorum. The next item would be their approval of minutes from June 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None names, motion passed. Under new business, item number one, request authorization to extend 2020 contract for the 2022/23 janitorial maintenance services to Echo Clean Maintenance Incorporated out of Elmhurst, Illinois for a total contract amount not to exceed $78,000.
So moved.
Second.
Joe?
This is just year three out of a third-year option or three-year option for us to renew our janitorial for a bunch of our facilities. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
None names, motion passed. Under reports for information only, we have one Department of Public Works monthly report. Do we have anything to add?
Just hoping we've gotten all the storms out of our system for the first month of summer.
Yes, I hope so.
And we have no more bad ones, that's it.
Okay, so we will receive and file that report. The engineering division monthly report, Al. Anything to add?
Give an additional update on the strike situation of the capital projects. So we're entering about week six of the situation right now. So similar to the last update, some limited work still continues on all projects. Concrete work, anything that's involving, not involving asphalt can generally continue. When the strikes could end, no, anyone's guess at this point in time, we don't have any good information one way or the other. So we'll just continue to work in the present with what we have. We do have some good news on our street project front of indications that our contractor believes they will start getting a supply of asphalt materials, you know, starting as early as next week. So we'll be keeping an eye on that, ensuring that their supply, if they do believe they'll have it, will be reliable. And I may be able to pick up progress on some locations at that time.
Trustee Palafas?
Can we source from anywhere else to bypass this group that's holding everybody's street projects hostage?
So it's difficult. There are some suppliers that, you know, are still fully functioning, Beverly Materials, for example, which is very close to us. So that is why some of the work can still continue and Schroder asphalt.
But can we dump who we have and go with them?
Well, they are, we are using some of them, but the problem still comes into the asphalt mixes. The source materials that they're designed with and approved by IDOT come from certain places. So they can't just make the switch to that very quickly to redesign mixes. That's something IDOT's contemplated doing, but take quite a bit of time to do. The reason we will likely be able to start getting some paving materials next week is because Schroder's material supplier is able to still get some materials at this time.
So to pre, to put that into my inside voice, you're saying, no, we can't dump who we have because of the suppliers and I, so IDOT's also a critical factor in this?
IDOT's work is stalled just as much as ours as far as paving goes.
I know that, but I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's no workaround to get, I mean, these supplies, we're not the only one on planet Earth where we can source these from. There's other places, we, I just don't get it.
Yeah, we have a limited window of delivery window, you know, transportation, just to get these materials here, you know, at the right temperatures and the right age. So we can only source from a certain range, locations, Lake County and to the north, or near the Wisconsin or near the Indiana border. A lot of those projects have been continuing by sourcing materials across state lines.
Can we do that?
Is unable to get the material here where it would be in specification for, and since getting paving materials, it wouldn't be, it wasn't of the shelf life to make that commute. And definitely have to come at a significant cost, even if it did, because that, you know, that transportation's not considered into our bid. So we are a little bit stuck just by the location we are in.
I mean, I don't mean to ask the ignorant question, I'm sure you thought of all these things, it's just the residents that we're at gatherings and parties with are like, hey, my street is sand, you know? Any ideas? Can't you, you know, would, so those are the questions we, that I get asked anyway.
Sure, no, I understand, I wish that we had some answers or some knowledge of what is going on. But, you know, without being the people in the room on one of those sides of the negotiating table, we're kind of stuck. But we do feel that even with the strike continuing, progress will go on. I know how well that's going to go, we don't know. We definitely need an end to this in the coming weeks to keep everything on schedule.
Last question. In future years, can we insulate ourselves by going with different suppliers that source from places that don't kill us when there is some disagreement? Can that be taken into consideration?
We don't, we don't get, Al, we don't get into that level of detail in our.
The can we?
Bid specifications, correct? So we're, we're putting out the specs for the, the roadways and the asphalt and the Batum minutes and all that kind of fun stuff. But we're not telling them where they necessarily have to get that from, correct?
Right, we, we're leaving it open till, you know, here's a, here's a list of approved places where you can source it from. Do we require them to source it from a particular place? You know, we don't because we allow the market to kind of give us the best economies on what's available. So if we, if we did take that route, you know, it's potentially could have cost impacts and, yeah, we could run into the same thing. If we went to one different supplier, they could have the same issue when others didn't.
What are the cost impacts if we miss our pouring window? Do we leave those streets that are sand through the winter?
So we're, we don't have too much that's in an active bad state. We, we would likely have streets that we would be cautious about starting additional locations. If things continued to go at a, a bad direction for a longer period of time, we'd have to start considering what locations to defer till next year under the current contract that we have. And just work on making sure we finish what's, what started.
Understood. So what's the drop dead date? October? Like, when can we not pour? Because we're, we're headed there and I haven't heard a good answer yet that satisfies my question, which I'm going to stop. But I just want to know that date. When can we not pour after October 15th, October 1st?
Depends on the weather.
Yep.
Yeah, it's weather dependent, but we generally assume we could work till the middle of November now that, that's in a typical year, you know, change. So we're cognizant of what we would start to the point where that wouldn't finish by that time.
No, I get that, yeah. I get that. Okay.
Okay, trustee Mills?
How many streets do we have right now that are down to base that we've already taken the asphalt out of?
None.
Okay, so everything is still drivable?
Correct. We have one street that was Amherst, where we started reconstruction. We removed the curb, we removed the driveway aprons. The sidewalk was replaced. So their, their driveway aprons are stone right now, but the pavement remains on that street.
Okay, so we have no streets that are down to sand, like you're saying?
I thought there was one off of Higgins over in the pie.
So Oakmont's underway, the, the concrete work's been completed, but we haven't ground the pavement down yet, but it's kind of still in.
I thought it was Campbell, anyway.
Campbell is, the Campbell was completed up till the, it's missing the surface course of asphalt, but the rest was.
Gotcha.
Completed.
Okay. And, and then that was the other question I had, trustee Palafas got it a little bit. At what point are we going to have to say, okay, we better not start anymore?
Oh, we're, I mean, we're looking at this on a week-to-week basis.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we adjust the schedule every week, things start moving back. And when we start getting to the point when we feel like the date's getting to, you know, the timeframe we need to finish the work is getting too close to the end of the season, we'll just start making those recommendations at that time.
Yeah, we're, we're in, and certainly I don't want to minimize the situation, but in terms of the, the state of affairs that we're in and what engineering has done, we're, we're in fairly good shape in terms of having things fairly buttoned up, right? And so some of that flack work and concrete work continues. We'll continue to do that. As Al indicated, we have binder down on that one street. So if we had to go into winter, which is binder course, that's not ideal, but it's not the end, it's certainly not the end of the world. You're still on a smooth surface. So as Al pointed out, we're not going to, we're not going to take on any other projects until this thing gets resolved. And if it doesn't get resolved this year, I think we can get things fairly buttoned up as we head into winter. And then that work will probably, my guess, would just get rebid next year.
So we can still get concrete, it's just the asphalt that's the problem?
Correct, Al, yep. That's correct, yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Trustee Stanton?
Alan, for the work that was done, I have a complaint regarding the landscaper who lays the seed. The seed is terrible. It has tons of weeds mixed in with it. And everywhere that you walk, at least on our property lines on Randy and Jody Lane, all you see are weeds mixed in with the grass. And if people don't take care of the weeds, that's all you're going to get is the weeds, not the grass. So I would have someone to discuss that issue with that landscaper.
Yeah, I think we're aware of that in many locations, so that'll be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Palafas?
It seems like we have this conversation every year and I don't know why. I mean, you, you lived it with me. The people on North End went so ballistic, right? I mean, over by Mr. Norris's house, it was like knee-high, right, off of Mumford. I just don't get it. Like, why do we keep having this conversation every year? It, I know it's not you guys. Who is it? Like, hey, can we stop doing business with them and go to the people that are good at it?
We've gone through a lot of contractors.
He's a subcontract to a, a, a under par landscaper that sucks. And then this is what we get every year. Anyway.
Are we, Al, are we doing erosion control blanket or are we doing topsoil and seed?
So some locations will be completing sod work when there's major work on resurfacing locations, doing seed and erosion control blanket, or they're, they're doing a hydroseed version as well, so similar to that.
Done? Yes? Okay, thank you. Just checking. Okay, so that report will be received and filed. President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, chairperson Noel.
Thank you, nothing under other, correct? No items in review, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
None names, motion passed, and we are adjourned.
You want a couple of minute break? I'd like to reconvene the July 18th, 2022 board meeting. Can you call the roll?
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Okay, we'll go down to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is a time if someone has a question or concern for the village board and village staff or an item not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Going once, twice, a few times, and move on. Number four, approval of the minutes of the July 5th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Five, consent agenda, I'm going to just vote. Chair, accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. The only items on the consent agenda are A, approval of the agenda, and B, approval of the schedule of bills for July 18, 2022 in the amount of $5,708,155.88. We do have a motion and a second, are there any questions on either one of these items? Not, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Hi, would to leave the board, I'd like to go down to Planning and Zoning Commission report. So chairperson can call, just can go home.
Before tomorrow.
You guys just want to get rid of me, I know. Planning and zoning commission requests board concurrence with the planning and zoning commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a corner side yard fence setback variation for the property located at 1990 Chippendale Road, but with six A's, five absent.
So moved.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second, any questions on this one? Seeing none?
No.
I had a question, but it's not regarding this, it's a question regarding how come there are five people absent? Were they on vacation? Did they give you a reason of any kind?
Um, I'm not privy to that.
Okay, thanks very much. It's disappointing.
Yes, it definitely is.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, if there's nothing else, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and zoning commission requests board concurrence with the planning and zoning commission recommendation and board approval of an ordinance granting a preliminary and final site plan, including the plat of easement for Popeyes located at 2280 West Higgins Road, but with six A's, five absent.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions on this one? Trustee Stanton?
The, there was supposed to be an elevation discrepancy on the elevation handout in the master sign plan, has that been fixed? It says petition stated that will be corrected and staff stated that the correct elevation will be provided to the village board.
Right, had to do with the signage. On that, you were supposed to have gotten the correct handout.
Yeah, I believe the plans that were included in the board packet are correct.
Okay.
Trustee Mills?
Is there seating inside of the restaurant?
Um, I believe there is.
I didn't see anything on the plan showing that.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Hi, I'm Jean Armada with MRV Architects. Yes, there's going to be 54 seats inside.
Okay.
There's a double drive-through though, Popeyes does a majority of their business through the drive-through.
Okay, and that back pathway leading behind.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm not 100% sure. They've been juggling with, with their scheduling just because of, they're, they're having trouble with getting materials, equipment and whatever, so they're having to juggle their schedule. I will, I don't quote me on this, but I, I believe it, this may, I don't know if it's going to happen in the fall, or I might have to wait till spring.
Okay.
So, but we're get, we're getting, we're getting ducks in a row, we still got more to.
Gary's going to be sitting there waiting.
We still have more to go.
It's a contest, if you can open before the other one.
Yeah, I hear there's another one.
Anyone else have anything else? If not, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and zoning commission requests board concurrence with the planning and zoning commission recommendation and board approval for an ordinance granting a master sign plan for Popeyes located at 2280 West Higgins, voting as six A's, five absent.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
All right, motion carried. Thank you, Chairperson.
Aye.
Trusty Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we seem to be having a lot of absences with planning and zoning. Can we get a tally of how many meetings people have missed over the last year or so? Just to see.
He's got that. Yeah, we, staff can put that together for him and distribute that, sure.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to item number six, reports information only. The president's report, we have proclamations. Who's got the first one?
I do. I have the first one. Office of the mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the public works department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 30 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Thursday, July 21st, 2022, as James Finn Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We appreciate the great job that Mr. Finn has done for the people of Hoffman Estates and his 30 years in the public works department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Mr. Nebel? We'll give this to him with our thanks in relation to Nikki Finn. I can't help but think. Okay, who's next?
I am, sir. I've said a mayor proclamation. Whereas on July 26th, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life, however, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. And whereas on the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Village of Hoffman Estates celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommending our efforts to reach full ADA compliance, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, July 26th, 2022, as Americans with Disabilities Act, awareness day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estate citizens, government agencies, business leaders, and public and private institutions in the village to celebrate the 32nd anniversary of this civil rights law and the many contributions of individuals with disabilities.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. This is probably the signal accomplishment of the H.W. Bush administration, something that was long overdue and took forever to get it done, but it finally got done. It's allowed people with disabilities to be much more fully involved in the life of the community and go places, and it's just made amazing difference. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Dr. Savigi, you want to accept this?
Thank you. Thank you for the great work your department does.
Okay, we already swore in Officer Merrick. I do have one resignation. Lauren Ewan from the Commission for People with Disabilities. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved, those regrets.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. We do have, some stuff has been going on lately, and, on July 9th, we had two block parties, one up in Evergreen on the north side and one on Randy Lane right by Trusty Stanton's house. They were both very well attended, and it's nice to see the block parties in full swing again. And on the 15th of July, the FAA made a presentation to the O'Hara Noise Compatibility Commission. Trusty Gata was on that Zoom with me also. And on the 16th, we all celebrated Ben Gibbs' birthday. At least, I assume we all did. And this morning, this afternoon, we had Retirement Lieutenant Andrew and Joe Goldbeck of the Police Department. We had our development meeting, and we had Sergeant Merrick's reception, and we also had the dedication of the bench by Lynx. And that was a great event also. And that's what I have. We'll move on to trustee comments, starting with trustee Arnett.
Thank you. I was also able to attend the two block parties on July 9th. What a beautiful day. You couldn't have asked for a better day for those block parties. Also, tonight, I, actually the 16th, attended the coffee with the board. Very good turnout, and it was nice to be back in this room for the coffee with the board. And also tonight, attended the bench dedication from Lynx, and also congratulations to Sergeant Adam Merrick and Sergeant Dozer. That's all I have.
Okay, the coffee with the council went very well. It was great to be back in the room. Trusty Stanton.
I should just say ditto and ended.
Okay.
Because the five things that trustee Arnett mentioned, I was there for all of them. Didn't know about Ben Gibbs' birthday on the 16th, though.
What are you doing now?
Yep.
Trusty Mills.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Sergeant Merrick, and that was great to see us give a new badge to Dozer, although I think Dozer enjoyed his tennis balls much more.
He did.
Thank you, Clerk Romanoff, for bringing those tonight. You do, and he showed it, too, when he came by here. I'm sorry to say I missed coffee with the board, but I was up in Wisconsin celebrating our 49th wedding anniversary with my husband, which was last week, and also a late birthday celebration from the week before. And also, tonight was at the bench dedication with Hoffman Estates Lynx. That's it.
Great. Trusty Gata.
Yeah, let's see. I attended the Wine Wednesday of June 22nd, since I didn't go over any of this two weeks ago. And then on the 24th, at the radio station, WBBN 105.9, they had a fundraiser that was outside of Jiffy Lube, and Mayor McLeod was answering questions there. And then on the 28th, Craig Talsman from the Park District for 25 years of service, and he was surprised with a proclamation that was read by, by the mayor. And of course, on the 29th, Mark Power retirement from the Children's Advocate Center. So that was a proclamation that was read there also. In fact, Karen Mills, trustee Mills, and Gary Stanton were there also. And then on the July 4th, of course, we had the parade. And then on July 9th, the two block parties, one on Tamarack and the other one on Randy Lane. And then Wednesday, the 13th, attended the senior bag assembly for the Senior Citizens Committee. And then on the 15th, the FAA presentation for the O'Hara Noise Compatibility Commission members on the Ohio, Ohio, O'Hara Terminal area, that Mayor McLeod was on that also. And then, of course, attending coffee with the board and for Sergeant Merrick, the Merrick, I should say, to congratulate him and Dozer. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, trustee Noel.
Pretty much what everyone else has said, so I'll just repeat it in case you forgot already. On the 9th, two block parties on Randy Lane and Tamarack, which is really, really nice, big crowds, it was great to be there, beautiful weather, as trustee Arnett had said. On the 14th, the Village Green, they had the mariachi band and singers, great crowd. Everybody enjoyed themselves. On the 16th, of course, the coffee with the board, as it was mentioned, nice to have everyone here and back in the boardroom. Tonight, the dedication for the Lynx bench, and congrats to Officer Merrick and Officer Dozer. And that's all I have.
Okay, trustee Palafas.
Yes, sir. We had our plots concert meeting tonight, and although everyone seemed to be on vacation, we were able to get through our agenda with just the few of us that were there. Many thanks to Suzanne for helping us get through some of these last couple of months where everybody seemed to be somewhere else. Mayor, on that note, I would like to ask for the enabling resolution for the Plots Concert Commission come to gap, so we can open the commission to folks that work and live outside of Hoffman Estates. As the event grows, we have people from, that live in Palatine, Barrington, Streamwood, and others that want to join the commission. I don't know how the group up here feels about that, but we could really use the help as it grows and gets bigger.
I didn't know we limited it bluntly.
I think we checked. I don't want to put Suzanne on this, but you checked.
Work or live in Hoffman Estates.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we could open that. I know some of the other commissions, like veterans, we don't care where you live. You want to be on it.
Put on a, can you put on a committee, Mr.?
Yeah, that would be, that would be super great. Like I said, we need to help, and a lot of the people on there now have friends that are recruiting. I wanted to thank trustee Stanton and trustee Mills for bringing up the attendance question for planning and zoning. That was kind of front in my mind, and I think it's important that if those people are just busy or moved on and something else in life is, you know, pulling their attention, that we get people that, you know, have more time. I also wanted to bring up the idea, we have five really busy commissions, not that they all aren't busy, but five that demand a ton of time. And I would like to see us stipend our staff liaisons that cover those commissions because of that activity. I mean, we give them the honorary day off, which kind of fits in the so what category for me, but I'd like to see us think of maybe another way of acknowledging their efforts. Financially, I think is, would behoove people the most, but just something to discuss. Anyway, moving on, the neighborhood block party in trustee Stanton's neighborhood was the best I've attended yet. It was a blowout, and it was so fun meeting all of those, you know, different families and the jump bounce houses and the snow cone, it was great. So I look forward to more of those. I also want to congratulate Sergeant Merrick and Dozer. Like she said, you can't beat, you know, and sorry to follow a dog that just got promoted. So nevertheless, I'm glad District 15 came in. It's sad that their biggest municipality of Palatine, you know, can't let them get in front of them. I just, I find that shocking. I have higher expectations for our peer communities, but nevertheless, also wanted to thank Mr. Palm and others who were involved in the Comcast outages and all the emails and calls and whatnot, and, you know, kind of helping tighten the seatbelt on me for getting through some of those. A lot of people were affected with some high dollar amounts, you know, when you come home and your power's been out for the day and you have to throw away your entire refrigerator or freezer, and that hurts, especially in today's economy. Anyway, the Thursday Arts Commission concerts have been very well attended this year, and this week will be no exception, as we have the very popular group, Radio Gaga, which is a fun combination of Freddie Mercury and Lady Gaga. For those of you who aren't old enough, Freddie Mercury was the lead singer queen back in the 70s and 80s. So it'll be a blowout, really, and, you know, they've been forecasting good weather for two weeks Thursday, so hopefully we'll have it. And other than that, that's all for me.
Okay, I didn't know Lady Gaga was that old.
She's not, but Freddie Mercury.
Who was manager's report?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Dubtailing with what trustee Palafas had just mentioned, staff's been involved and aware of some of the power outages that have occurred in our community over the last month or so, and we have, at the request of the mayor, and some of you have begun a dialogue with ComEd. Some of those outages have been repeat outages in the same parts of town, and so we've, again, started a dialogue with our government services representative to see if there are ways to, although we'll never eliminate power outages, certainly try to reduce that and see if there is some consistency in what's causing those outages to happen. A lot of it, obviously, mother nature related, but in speaking with ComEd today, they have indicated that they have, are putting, are currently putting together an action plan to address those issues. Some that will include some equipment on their end, but a lot of it will include vegetation management, which is a fancy word for, we're going to go through the easements and cut everyone's trees back. So that is what's causing a lot of those issues are tree and limb related. So they are working on that. We have set a tentative date right now in early August for them to come to a meeting, but they are still working on confirming some things, but have agreed to come to, to the village to share those plans. And certainly, once we have that date pinned down, we'll make you aware of that and share that with the community so residents are welcome to attend. But really, the goal here is to, for ComEd to share, acknowledge that there's an issue and share with the community their plans to, to address it. So that was that item. And then, thanks to Public Works, our EV charging stations are up and running up here at Village Hall. I can personally attest that they work, and I will be having a ribbon cutting with the Sustainability Commission in the future on that. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Oh, we can, do we? Suzanne, can you introduce our new intern for us?
Made him stay late, you might as well.
Hi, everybody. So I wanted to introduce Daniel Languth. He is our new intern. He's joining us from NIU, where he will be starting the MPA program. As you likely know, we have a long history with the NIU MPA program, and we've had a lot of interns come through, working with us in general government, and many of them have gone on to long and illustrious careers in public service. So again, we're welcome, welcome to Daniel, and we're happy to have him.
Can he stand up so we can see?
Can he come up here and say hello?
Put him on the spot.
Name, address, social security number?
Hello, everyone. Really excited to be here. I wish I would have worn a suit, retired, something a little nicer, but.
That's right.
Yeah, I was really happy to listen into this meeting and get a feel of how municipal government works. Excited to be here.
Thanks, Daniel. Daniel is a resident of Palatine, so.
I would also like to point out that Daniel did not know there was a meeting tonight, so this is all very much a surprise to him, so. But he will be joining us for future meetings as well.
Right.
Okay, village clerk's report.
No report. Poor Bev.
Treasurer's report, you have that in front of you, will be received and filed. Does anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? Seeing none? Okay, received and filed. We'll move on to additional business. A, request board approval of an ordinance amending section 8-3-22, number of licenses of Article III alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Court, increase the number of Class A licenses for the Best in the West Barbecue LLC, doing business as the Best in the West Barbecue, 2590 West Gulf Road, Hoffman Estates, Illinois. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this item? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Anna has a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious, because on the liquor hearing, it says 2509, and on here it says 2590.
That's got the answer.
I just want to make sure that it's.
2509. So once again.
2509.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't make mistakes.
That does.
I just read it wrong.
I just figured the left handle was faster than the right, you know?
Okay, all right, sir.
We do have a motion and a second.